And we're going to move on to item number 16, business items. Does anybody need a break or anything? We're good?
We're good.
All right. Harder Tanks Painting Improvement Project. I know we have some letters, some public comment on this item. Go ahead.
Yes, so if it's okay with counsel, I'm going to go through the presentation. I would ask counsel then to basically open to the public. At that point, I will read the letter received from the contractor, Calciera. I would ask that counsel get additional public input. We then close the public hearing and then there's a series of questions that have been submitted by Calciera. And so after the public hearings closed, my proposal would be to go through those questions and provide responses in real time. And so if counsel is okay with that, like I said, I'll do the presentation first and then get into the letter that was received from Calciera.
Okay.
Okay, the project before you tonight is the Harder Tanks Painting Improvements Project. So the city's water distribution system is comprised of mains within the streets and then you also have reservoirs located throughout the city. The Harder Tank Facility includes two 2 million gallon tanks. And the staff had a consultant go out and do an inspection of not only the exterior coating of the tanks, but the interior coating as well. From the exterior perspective, as you drive by the tanks, they're located on the west side of Harder Parkway, you can clearly see that the coatings have degraded. There's a lot of rust along the soffit. But then on the interior, there's some pictures here that show that we have interior rust and delamination of the interior coating. And what they noted was that the surface appeared to be from a much older tank than what it is. And so based upon that, staff moved forward with hiring Jacobs Engineering to prepare the plans and specifications for the project to recote not only the interior, but the exterior of the tanks as well. So here's the, here's a nice picture of the tanks when they were first constructed. So right now you would go out there and you would see a lot of rust along the top here. As noted, the tanks are located on the west side of Harder Parkway, north of basically where Jefferson would extend through. For reference purposes, here's Walmart. The project was put out to bid in May and 11 bids were received on July 14th. The engineer's estimate was 1.7 million. And you can see that there's a wide range of bids, a large portion below the engineer's estimate. And then we had an apparent low bidder of Calciera Construction, whose bid amount was $1,258,860. And then the second low, FAR Construction, was $1,259,900. So this award bid is contested. So the apparent second low bidder, FAR Construction, submitted an objection to the city that the apparent low bidder, Calciera, was not responsive due to an unregistered subcontractor and defective bid bond. So that letter is posted on the city's website and available for public review. Staff also reviewed the bids in coordination with the city attorney and found that the apparent low bid from Calciera Construction is not responsive due to several reasons. So the subcontractor was listed, that was listed in the bid, was not registered with the Department of Industrial Relations at the time the bid was submitted, which was required per the bid specifications. The bid bond was submitted on a form that was marked sample. And a separate bid bond was also submitted that was not conforming with the proposal forms. And then on a line item for a bid item for metals, they noted no bid. So actually, they actually wrote no bid in the line item. So staff notified Calciera Construction of the findings and recommendations to be presented to counsel. So we notified them on July 23rd. Calciera Construction responded late last week, on August 14th, asserting that the subcontractor was registered with DIR at the time the notice to contractors was issued, but due to COVID restrictions, was unable to reach DIR staff to pay the necessary fees and was assured by DIR that a 30-day grace period would be in effect. So the staff response to that is there was nothing located that would legally mandate an extension or provide a grace period for renewal of registration due to COVID on either the DIR website or the executive orders issued by the governor. DIR has an online renewal and registration system that would allow registration to renew electronically. And no special exceptions to the registration requirement applies. This project is not federally funded. So here's an excerpt or a screenshot of the Department of Industrial Relations website. The subcontractor's name is listed here, but over on here, when you look at the registration history, you can see there was an expiration date of June 30th. And then they went back into effect of July 29th. And we opened bids July 14th. Calciera also asserts the sample marking on the bid bond it provided was first noticed when the bid response was being packaged. And they decided to include both the signed sample bond, which was in the city's format, and another bond from the surety company, both of which they assert are legally valid. So staff's response to that is the bid packet required that the city's bond template be used. As the only bond based on the city's template was marked sampled, it is an irregularity indicating the bond is not valid or enforceable. So what should have taken place is it should have been a clean bid bond without the word sample across it. And so we've got that issue. And then in addition, they issued, they submitted a second bid bond that didn't conform to the requirements of the bid bond that we provide in the bid package. So based upon those two items, we determined that that was unacceptable. So staff is recommending that counsel reject the apparent low bid by Calciera. The irregularities in the bid response constitute a substantial and consequential discrepancy from the city's call for bids because it affects the amount of the bid, gives a bidder an unfair advantage and affects the ability to make bid comparisons. Even if these regularities were inconsequential, the council is not required to waive them. This will help ensure fairness for all bidders to the process as it promotes complete responses and sets a universal standard for all bidders. So one thing that I want to note, a question came up, responsive versus responsible. And I think that's a really good clarification. So a bid is responsive if it meets all of the requirements of the bidding documents and solicitation. The idea is to give all bidders an equal opportunity to gather information and prepare their bids. Making a decision on whether a bid is responsive or non-responsive relates to whether any irregularity in the bid gives the bidder substantial advantage or benefit not enjoyed by other bidders. Versus being responsible refers to a contractor's capability to provide the services requested. A bidder is responsible if they are capable or qualified to do the work. So to be clear in regard to Calciera's bid, the only item under consideration tonight is the responsiveness of their bid, not are they a responsible contractor? That's not in question whatsoever. And so although staff is unable to recommend award of the bid to Calciera due to the facts of the case, staff would both encourage and welcome Calciera's participation in future bid opportunities. So staff has also reviewed the bid response provided by FAR Construction of Sparks, Nevada. The bid was responsive to the requirements of the city's bid requirements, so no regularities were noted. And FAR Construction is a responsible company capable of completing the work. So based upon that, staff recommends that counsel award a construction contract to FAR Construction in amount of their total bid of $1,259,900. So the estimated total construction cost for the project is approximately, it's approximately $1,661,890, which consists of the components noted there. And there are sufficient funds in the project account. We actually have a balance of approximately $2.3 million in the account right now. Staff is also requesting a construction contingency of $125,990 and a consultant contingency of $60,000 to cover unpredictable variables associated with the project. So once they get in there, there could be possible metal repairs that need to be done to tank elements. And then those metal repairs cannot be quantified until they get in there to actually start doing the work. Staff is also requesting authorization to enter into a professional services agreement with Jacobs Engineering to assist with engineering services during construction. There'll be a lot of submittals associated with this that staff doesn't have the technical expertise to review. And so Jacobs would provide that. And then also, this would require a special inspection. So we're requesting to award a contract to West Coast Coatings for the special coatings inspections and testing. We don't want to get into a situation again where the work doesn't meet the expectation in long term. We get into where the coating doesn't last as long as it should. So with that, the recommendations are noted here. So adopt a resolution approving the plans and specs. Adopt a resolution approving finding of a Class 1 categorical exemption. Reject the apparent low bid as unresponsive. Award a construction contract to FAR Construction. Adopt a resolution to authorize the city manager into, to enter into professional services agreements with Jacobs Engineering and West Coast Coatings. And with that, I'd be happy to answer questions at this time or we can go into the, the public hearing portion.
Any questions from counsel? Nothing?
I do.
Go ahead.
The mayor, how old are the current tanks?
They were constructed in the timeframe of, I believe, about 2005, completed around 2005.
So is the interior damage, I can understand the exterior issues, but is the interior damage, would that be considered normal?
No. You would expect some pinholes to occur over time where you go in and do spot repairs. In terms of the delamination, the rust, what the consultant noted was that seemed to be more advanced than what would you, you would expect of a tank of that age. They would expect it to last longer. Also, as part of this work would be also addressing the cathodic protection system within the tanks.
So this, if, if this is awarded to this particular company, what kind of warranty, I guess, for lack of a better term? What's the expected, you know, they're going to have to go in and do all the things you got to do to get it back to bare metal, I'm assuming?
Right.
So how do we protect ourselves from something like this happening?
Well, that's why we hire the special inspector where this is what they do. This is their, you know, their expertise. And so we hire a special inspector to come in to ensure that the, the coating installation meets the specifications. They're also required to provide a warranty of one year. And then if we got into a situation where years down the road, there was an issue, then that would get into the construction defect where we would get the city attorney involved and their attorneys involved. And we would address it through that avenue.
So there is a potential for recourse if there's a problem?
There is, yeah.
And Diana, what about recourse from the previous provider?
No, it's too, too long ago.
Too long ago?
Yeah.
All right. Good question, though.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
And what is the true life of a good job that's well done without any defects? I mean, another 10 years, 20 years before we're having to do this again?
I believe it's about 20 years.
Okay.
That's, I'm going based on memory of what I read in the report.
All right, so I know we have letters to read or a letter to read. Do we have any, any public comment that came in online on this by chance?
None have come online.
Okay. At this point, we can read the letter.
Okay, I'm going to take a drink of water first and be reading a little bit. Okay.
Do we open the public hearing before the letters or during or after?
I don't see where we need a public hearing on this.
I would go ahead and open it to public comment at this point in time and I'll read the letter. And then we would close public comment. So even though it's not technically a public hearing, I would still open it for public comment and then close public comment and...
All right. Well, I just asked for public comment.
I'm talking about the letter from Calciera.
Oh, okay. Go ahead. We'll open it.
Okay. So the city has received additional correspondence this afternoon from Marco Lusich of Calciera Construction. And so it says, "Honorable counsel members, Calciera Construction Incorporated respectfully hereby submitting this synopsized review of our case objecting to the city's categorization of our bid as non-responsive. First, Calciera Construction is a highly respected A-licensed general engineering contractor with a 40-plus-year record of impeccable contracting services, including numerous previous projects with equal or greater scope and size. Second, in regards to the city claim that Calciera used an unregistered contractor, the California Labor Code, Public Contract Code and the Department of Industrial Relations' Public Works reforms specifically invalidates the city's claim. The specific excerpts pertaining to this invalidation has been provided to the city in the previously submitted Calciera letter dated August 11th, 2020. Third, in regards to the city's claim that Calciera submitted an insufficient bid bond, a properly valued bid bond was acquired and submitted on both the city's form and as an independent document with full notary stamps and wet signatures prior to the bid due date. Based on the fact that the bid bond was valid and a simple call to the bonding company would have confirmed the validity of the bond, Calciera's bond must be considered to be valid. The reference to the city's sample designation on their form is a fault of the city's bid package structure and is immaterial to the bond's validity. Finally, the city references a discrepancy in the no-bid designation in the Calciera bid item number four. In fact, the city distributed addendum number one to the bid that specifically changed bid item number four from a bid item to an approved steel repair item. The city's explicit exclusion to this change was applicable to contractors that would opt to perform approved steel repairs for contractors' temporary access points. Calciera will not be performing any steel modifications for temporary access, thereby invalidating the need to price bid item number four. The Calciera bid substantially conforms to the bid request as advertised by the city. Calciera is not requesting a bid alteration of any type. Legal precedent, as referenced in Calciera's August 11th letter, supports Calciera's claim that the city reference discrepancies are minor and inconsequential to the material nature of the bid. On this basis, we hereby respectfully request that the board allow the legitimately lowest-priced competent bidder as Calciera Construction to perform the subject project on your behalf. Thank you for your review and consideration of this very important matter." And there were a series of questions that were submitted along with the letter. And so once we close the public comment period, I will read those questions and then provide the response.
Okay. Do we have any further public comment? Okay, we'll close that. Public comment period and we'll go ahead and get into that.
Question number one, did the counsel members review Calciera's response letter? So staff response, the letter was posted on the city's website and provided to the city council. Question number two, did Yuba City's counsel, in terms of our attorney, respond to the points put forward in our letter? Staff response, legal advice from the city attorney is confidential. However, staff have worked closely with the city attorney's office during this process. Number three, if so, what was the publicly available response? Staff's response, there is no publicly available response, but after appropriate consultation, staff's recommendation to reject Calciera's bid as non-responsive has not changed. Number four, was any outreach to our surety conducted to confirm the validity of the two bidders guarantees provided with the bid? Staff response, this is not required. The bottom line is that the bid bonds were non-conforming and not in compliance with the bid packet requirements. The city may demand strict compliance with the bid specifications. Number five, was any outreach conducted to confirm the validity of the DIR registration criteria as it relates to this issue? Staff response, DIR registration, or lack thereof, by the subcontractor was confirmed on multiple locations, occasions. A slide was provided that showed an excerpt from DIR's website confirming that the subcontractor was not registered at the time of the bid opening. Number six, bid item number four was optional. If we had listed $0 for the item, the city could conceivably... If we had listed $0 for the item, the city could conceivably conclude that Calciera owed the city a door sheet and that it should be provided for $0 cost. The industry correct response for the item is no bid as the scope of work not required. This was offered specifically to negate any ambiguities. In what way did this item affect the total that was written both numerically and spelled out in English? So response, in the interest of time, this is a smaller issue and it doesn't address the failure to comply with the bond and registration requirements, each of which provides an unfair advantage is a basis for rejecting the bid for nonconformity. Number seven, prior to rejecting our bid as non-responsive, did you consult with the firm that collaborated on the creation of the RFP? Staff response, this also is not required. It is the city's RFP packet, reviewed and approved under the direction of the city, and the city is entitled to rely on the plain language of its own bid packet without consultation with non-parties. Number eight, does this counsel understand that many of the ambiguities herein are the direct result of the manner in which the RFP was advertised, directed, distributed and interpreted? Staff response, Calciera has raised no specific issues as to how the manner in which the RFP was advertised, directed or interpreted somehow created ambiguities as to requirements for bond conformity, subcontractor registration with DIR, et cetera. The plain language of the bid packet speaks for itself as to these issues. If Calciera did not think something was clear or did not understand the language of the RFP, it had multiple opportunities to seek clarification from the city. It did not. Calciera should have been reasonably aware of the opportunity to seek prior clarification from the city if it had reviewed the bid packet instructions or read any of the city responses to 28 requests for clarification regarding the project. Number nine, will counsel consider a continuation of their decision until these questions are answered? Staff response, whether to continue the item is up to city counsel. However, at this time, we are not recommending that this item be continued. And the final question, what specification does your formal bid protest and appeal procedure follow? Staff response, there is no requirement to have a formal bid protest and appeal procedure. Unlike a finding of nonresponsibility, the process for rejection on the grounds of nonresponsiveness has minimal requirements as follows. A bidder determined to be non-responsive is entitled to notice of that fact and is entitled to submit materials in a manner defined by the city concerning the issues of responsiveness. The city is not required to conduct a hearing and need not produce findings. A city generally has the discretion to determine responsiveness and may demand strict compliance with the bid specifications, which promotes an even playing field for the entire bid community. The finding of nonresponsiveness should be memorialized as part of the award of contract. Here, the city has met and exceeded these requirements. The city provided Calciera notice of its nonresponsiveness and the fact it was entitled to respond almost a month, 27 days, before tonight's meeting. The city is not required to provide a hearing and has provided ample opportunity for Calciera to comment and submit materials. After waiting for more than 20 days from the city's notice, Calciera submitted a response last Friday after the agenda was published. Notwithstanding, the response was posted on the city's website and made available to the city council in public. Thereafter, Calciera submitted further comments a few hours ago despite operational restrictions on city resources from COVID-19. Although not required to answer questions, staff have responded to Calciera's written questions tonight. The basis for the finding of nonresponsiveness is further memorialized in the resolution for the award of the contract, which was also made publicly available and posted for tonight's meeting as part of the agenda. Now I gotta get my breath.
I thought you were getting your breath too.
Through the mayor?
Ockmore. Yes, sir.
And I'm sorry, Diana, but did you also have excerpts from the bid responses to show the city council?
I do. So the next few slides show actual excerpt from the bid responses. So, so by way of information, here are excerpts from the city's actual RFP regarding subcontractor registration, bid bonds and bid responses. So this is actually taken from the special provisions. So in regard to authority to reject any bid, in its discretion, city council may reject any and all bids presented and may accept an item or group of items of any bid, may modify or cancel in whole or in part the notice inviting bids and may determine to re-advertise for bids. Similarly, the city councilors designate reserve the right to waive informalities and minor regularities in any bids received. And then the city's requirement to use city's proposal forms. So it notes in bold, if a contractor likes to submit a bid, the proposal form must be obtained from the city. Requirement to show unit prices. So unit prices shall be shown on bids submitted as well as a total price for each item upon the bid. So this is regard to the item where they actually wrote no bid instead of, you know, like a zero. Requirement for the subcontractor to be registered with DIR. It specifically says, no contractor or subcontractor may be listed on a bid proposal for a public works project unless registered with DIR. Again, related to the proposal form, all proposal forms shall be directly purchased from the city and shall be made upon the proposal forms included in these special provisions. So I think one thing that's important to explain, the sample on the bid bond is what's put out there on the website for people to be able to see the project. When you actually purchase the plans and specifications, that sample is removed from the bid bond and you have a clean bid bond. This contractor purchased the plans and specifications. And so we're not sure why they used a bid bond that had sample written across and then also provided another bid bond that didn't conform to the city requirements. Rejection of the proposals. Proposals may be rejected if they show any alterations of form, additions not called for, conditional or alternative bids, incomplete bids, erasures or irregularities of any kind. Also, the city reserves the right to waive any informality or regularity in any bidder bidding. And then in regard to the bid response identifying Garrett Painting and Sand Blasting as a subcontractor, you can see where they noted them right here. And so there was the DIR number. We look up the DIR number and it's, they're shown as...
We need to take a break real quick?
Okay.
If we may?
Yeah.
All right, so we'll go short recess for a few minutes. All right, we are all back. Thank you very much. And I will put us back into session. Shannon's back with us.
Okay. So we're going through excerpts from the actual bid package. So bid response providing a sample bond and another non-conforming bond without required language. So here is the sample bidder's bond that they submitted. So again, you have the watermark of sample. And then here's the other bid bond that they submitted, but the language is not conforming to the city's sample bid bond. And then here's the bid response where they actually submitted, wrote no bid instead of putting a dollar amount in there. And that's the, the end.
All right, well, thank you for that. And I confirm we have no further public comment. We can bring it back to counsel for discussion and/or action.
Well, I, through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
Rules are rules. They've probably been through the bid process many a times with other organizations and cities. I've worked with the city, I've seen bids come through and stuff like that. And if, you know, you didn't dot the I across the T, well, I'm just saying certain things, it's, it's nonvalid. And I believe staff's recommendation is proper. And after a few people comment on it, I'd like to make the motion to take staff's recommendation and take the other construction company to do our tanks. I'll let the other staff, counsel members speak before I make that motion.
I've got no further comment. Anybody can second? Or do you have a comment?
I think vice mayor does.
Go ahead.
So this is both for Ms. Langley and for Shannon. Do we have to take an action first to reject the bid? I'm looking at, I'm looking at item 16 on our agenda and it doesn't say anything in regards to the, the apparent non-responsive bid.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mayor Protim. If you look at item number B, that's the recommendation. It has a resolution. And one of the things that it does is it rejects the apparent low bid as unresponsive. And if you look at the resolution itself, it contains findings for rejecting low bid as unresponsive based upon failure to have a registered subcontractor, the failure to provide bid bonds in performance with the city's requirements and the no-bid issue on the metals.
Okay, so no separate action on rejecting the bid. Given, given the volume of information that's been shared with us, would it be best to make a motion and read items A, B, C and D? Or could we potentially say we make a motion to accept staff's recommendations, items A, B, C and D?
Both of them are valid options.
Okay. I yield for any other questions.
Through, through the mayor. I am in agreement with Councilman Cardoso, but I just have with, if we were to accept the contract for the company FAR Construction, is it? Yes. FAR Construction Corporation, which is out in Nevada? Right, so this would be...
Correct?
Yes. So this would be under prevailing wage, correct, for labor?
Yes.
Right? So would Nevada hire people here locally or would they bring in their own labor?
They have to meet the prevailing wage requirements regardless of where they're from. If they're doing public, public works projects in California, they have to meet the prevailing wage requirements regardless of where their home base is.
So I'm just thinking of some, you know, folks that here locally could utilize a really good paying job in the circum... really good-paying job in the circumstances of our economy at the moment. So I was just wondering if, how many, do you know if there's going to be possibly, how many jobs available with this contract?
Through the mayor? Can I, I'm sorry, through the mayor, these are, this is a specialty company. They're specialized, so it's, it's, I'm sorry, Diana.
Councilman Cardoso, I think, our city manager's...
Okay.
Thank you.
This is a specialty corporation.
And there's specialty people that are under prevailing wage that can have that job.
I will say that we don't require that they hire a certain number of people locally in public contract code projects. It's not a typical requirement that you would have to put a stipulation on there that they hire a certain number of people locally. Now, there are certain funding sources that require, have apprenticeship requirements, or they have disadvantaged business or requirements. This does not have any specialized funding. It's 100% paid for through the city's water fund, and so it's a very straightforward project in terms of, they do need to pay prevailing wage, but there are no requirements that they hire a specific number of people locally.
Okay, so you answered the question. Thank you.
Through the mayor, I just want to express my thanks to you, Ms. Langley, and you, Mr. Chaffin, because you obviously put a lot of work into this, trying to give Cal benefits of the doubts, but at the end of the day, requirements are the requirements, and I just want to say thank you for the work you guys have done on this and responsiveness. And back to the last comment, I mean, we talked about this at the prior council meeting and Councilwoman Esmondola. I understand you, I value our union reps in this area, but we have to be really, really careful as a municipality, trying to tell companies, you know, or who they'll hire, who they want. We talked about it with, I think it was the LDS or something like that last time. Our job is to do what's in the best for the city, and we just hope that if the opportunity arises, the companies do use some local labor, but there's no way that we can tie that together. So anyway, I'm ready to move on.
Through the mayor, I'd like to make staff's recommendation of the Hard Tanks Painting Improvement Project 20-06, recommendations A, B, C, and D.
Second? All right. First and second to approve staff's recommendation, A, B, C, and D. All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
And opposed? None. Thank you very much.
I would like to note that Claire Schauer is the project manager for this project, and so she has done a lot of coordination with the contractors. Kevin Bradford worked directly with the city attorney in terms of crafting their responses, and so I appreciate the recognition, but it's really Kevin and the city attorney and Claire that have been involved in this.
All right. Thank you. I thank them.